Well, this is a great meeting. Everybody here is getting paid to be here, more or less. Anyway, we have a public hearing on the sewer rates. Okay, if there's anyone from the public wishing to address the board on the sewer rates, we address the board at this time. If not, we need a motion to adopt that.
That's later on.
Right on. So, close the meeting. The public hearing required the meeting. We'll move on with the agenda. Minutes of meeting of May 7th. Any corrections or comments?
Make a motion then we accept the minutes of the hearing.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did everybody get their list of bills?
What?
Everybody get their list of bills on Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at them.
Yep. Got a question for Mr. Falcone in the electric department. What can you answer?
It was LED fixtures, 2,688.
What fixtures are those?
Those are the replacement fixtures that we are putting on the streets now.
Street?
Right.
Street lights?
Right. On aluminum poles.
On aluminum poles. Thank you. So, any questions?
What are all these Montgomery holes up the ladder, $136 for various people? Presumably some kind of training reverse school or something?
Yep.
You know what that is, Tom?
I think that's the fire training school.
Yeah, fire training school.
More.
Uh, well, they have to pay it themselves and then they got reversed by the...
Yeah, I think so.
I'm pretty sure that's it.
Okay.
Yep. Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second? Hold on. Do you have any additions, our son?
No, I don't.
Okay, a motion to second to approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, we have correspondence. We have a letter from Steve Merchant. Um, you can read that, please.
Yes. It is, "Attention, village administrator, mayor, and village board. My name is Steve Merchant, chairman of the Friends of the Stage, and I've been asked by the clothing bin owner if he could put a third bin at the rec center. On account there have been so many bags of clothes dropped off that the two bins cannot handle the volume anymore. Having a third bin should eliminate bags being left outside the bins, thus creating an eyesore. Please consider this request and let me know of your findings. Thanks, Steve Merchant, Friends of the Stage."
Okay. Now, we checked into this. Of course, they want to put a third bin out here. And what I wanted to ascertain was that they weren't going to just put a third one in and then not have to come so often, you know, so we'd be storn... And that isn't the case. They're going to come, I believe it's once a week, like they are now, and they're just going to pick up all three instead of two. They actually pay the Friends of the Stage. They make money off of this.
Yes.
And the clothes get donated to needy people, so it's kind of like, looks like it's like a win-win for everybody. So, I would suggest that we approve that or give them permission to put a third one there. Do you need a motion for that, Don, or just... Okay, a motion for...
I'll make a motion to...
Second? Okay, a motion to second to approve installation of a third clothing bin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, please notify the proper people here. Okay, the next thing we have is an invitation.
This is from Brendan Lenick, who is the postmaster of the Russell Point post office. And this is addressed to the mayor and vote of trustees. You are cordially invited to attend the Postmaster General Hero Award Ceremony at the Russell Point Post Office for Jennifer Bertrand on Friday, May 25th, 2018, at 11:00 a.m. And it will be at the Russell Point Post Office, and she's asking for an RSVP by the 23rd.
Okay, this has to do with that baby that fell out the window in the snow last winter. Remember that deal with Peggy Rivers?
Right.
So, they've invited us to honor this letter carrier that did that. Now, I plan to attend myself. Is it...
Yep.
Rest of the board?
Out there.
Okay. Well, you can't, working. Tom?
What's the date?
It's Friday, it's Friday at 11 o'clock.
Not sure.
Two or three.
Okay. I'll leave it at that. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Okay, now I have the sewer rate resolution. I'm not going to read this whole thing. It's new rates, the residential rates for under metered water connection will be $37 a month. I believe that's up a dollar, our son.
That's correct.
Same as the water was.
Yeah.
Commercial, residential sewer users with metered water will be charged the same method as the metered commercial establishments, but not less than $37 a month. The commercial users, we have a whole list of different quarters of what they're charged. And was anything raised other than the general, or is it a dollar across the board to all the different rates pretty much?
It's a dollar. The basic rate was raised a dollar. That's what it was.
And that's it?
Yes.
Okay. And this will take effect June 1st. So, I move that to the floor to adopt the new sewer rates. I shall move the rate of the sewer and adopt this resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call on this. Trusty Arnold?
Aye.
Trusty Dar?
Aye.
Trusty Menard?
Aye.
Trusty LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Local law 2-2018, Chapter 58, cryptocurrency and data mining. We had the public hearing on this at the last board meeting. There were no comments from the public. I guess entertain a motion to adopt this...
I'll make a motion to adopt the, this law, 58, Chapter 58, Law 2, I'm sorry, 2018, Chapter 58, for cryptocurrency, data mining, and all that includes.
Second? Okay, have a motion in the second. Roll call, vote. Trusty Arnold?
Aye.
Trusty Dar?
Aye.
Trusty Menard?
Aye.
Trusty LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Procurement policy. This resolution sets forth the policies and procedures of the Village Russell Point to meet the requirements of the general municipal law, Section 104-P. And it's quite lengthy, but we have a real clear flow chart in color to explain it to you. And it's kind of a neat flow chart once you figure it out, but...
I thought our lawyer was going to be able to explain it to us.
So, anyway, does anyone have any questions regarding the procurement policy? I don't think we've changed at all from last year. We just streamlined it to make it clearer, believe it or not, and more in compliance with the state regulations. Is that correct, Minister?
The only thing we actually did change was the dollar amounts needed...
Oh, yes.
To make a purchase without quotes and prior approval. Currently, it's at $100. We've moved it up to $250.
Yes.
To just be better in line with purchases and the inflation since that $100 one I just put in.
Okay, any other comments or questions about the procurement policy?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a...
So, one?
Second? Just roll call, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, now I have a budget modification. Budget Resolution 2018-16. And this just realigns funds. Again, I'm not going to read it because it's quite lengthy, but what basically does is it takes into consideration these unbudgeted revenues that we just received, like for the rent for the police station, the sale of the back hole, and federal aid from FEMA thing. And then we've got some new appropriations. The one that's, one of them's just moving the pickup truck from next fiscal year to this fiscal year, because we got it last week, the Chevy. So, it's going to, we're going to pay for it now, we already paid for it, but it will be taken off of the budget for next year. So, it's out of there, we paid for it. And the other thing is, I added today $7,500. We created a recreation center capital projects fund and put $7,500 in there for the paint and the refurbishment of this building. We just took kind of a guess at what it would cost, but I know the paint's over $5,000. So, anything that's not spent on the project will revert back to the general fund. I guess let's see. These are the four net results on here, our son. Is that all we need to do?
Yes.
Okay, the net result of the general fund is we're increasing the revenues by $46,214 and increasing the appropriations by $21,854 and decreasing the appropriated fund balance by $24,360. In the water fund, we're increasing the appropriated fund balance by $14,500. And we're increasing appropriations, or we're decreasing, now we're increasing the appropriations by $14,500. The sewer fund, we're increasing the appropriated fund balance by $3270 and increasing appropriations by $3270. And then the recreation capital, we're increasing to $7,500. That showed what was coming out the other end. So, let's see, we got, okay. So, that's the sum of it. I need a motion to approve this.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-16, budget modification resolution.
Second?
Second.
Second? Okay, roll call, vote. Trusty Arnold?
Aye.
Trusty Dar?
Aye.
Trusty Menard?
Aye.
Trusty LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. A request came to me that if we're ever going to do anything with a potential beach in the future, preliminary to that, we should do some water testing, which is not very expensive, like $25 tests that have to be done over a period of time to see if the water is suitable to make a beach before we apply for any grants or funding or anything like that. But you have to know if it's worth even pursuing the beginning of it. So, they asked that we budget $1,000 into that fund for water testing of the beach for, I guess you could call it feasibility water testing. So...
The reason why they closed the beach in the first place was because of the fleas on the ducks. That's why they closed it.
Well...
Because a lot of fleas.
And they call them sand fleas. But I never saw any when I took my kids down there, but that was 40 years ago, too. And that part where that beach is, is under the bridge now.
That's right, yeah.
You know, moved over. So, they're seeing if there's, if it's worth doing it or not.
Well, not only that, that belongs to the bridge mission. They don't belong to the village.
I know that.
Yeah.
But before we pursue asking if we can get the land transferred, we want to reestablish a beach, before you do any of that, you got to see if the water's worth having it. You know, if it's, you know, if it's got chloroform or something in it, any of those bacteria things, you can't have a beach there, it would be no sense in pursuing it at all. So, how long do you testify? How long, or twice a year or... No, it's, what is it, once a week for...
Well, we would likely do twice a week for the duration of the summer through mid-June at the latest, through mid-September. And that should give us a good data set for the water quality. And if there are strong storms, significant rainfalls, things like that, we may try to ask our sewer plant to test a little extra, just depending on what the water's doing, so that we can see how it responds. Both Jessica and I have experienced, substantial experience with this, and definitely if the water quality's not there, there's no point, because it'll never get approval, and any investment we make would be, of time or money, would be well wasted. So, it's a small investment right now, probably good to get a good summer's worth of data before you do anything else.
So, I'm open for anything you want, whichever way you want to go, you know?
I mean, we're not spending a lot, and it brings a lot of benefits.
It's kind of the first step if you're going to do anything, one way or another, unless you've just decided you're never going to have a beach, which maybe, yeah, I don't know. But before you do anything, you have to do this.
So, I'll make a motion that we send $1,000 to do water testing at the beach.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Let's just do it. Have results.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Water testing feasibility, water quality studies approved.
I talked to Brian Delmo about the water plant and the skid units. They're waiting, making sure that everything is going to come to par. When they come up and they're going to do both skid units at the same time and stuff. So, they're looking into, I forget what he told me now. I should have wrote it down. Well, anyhow, but they're going to come up very shortly and hook them up. He fixed the broken part and stuff. They sent that to him and stuff, and he fixed the broken part that was broken.
Yeah, I heard, and he got an extra one, too.
He got an extra one.
Which is pretty inexpensive fitting.
Oh, yeah, just a little plastic fitting, half inch long, yeah. So, and the Adams filter is put back together, but they got a bad leak in it. And you just got to have some guys tighten it up. He's not showing up, I guess, or something. I don't know.
Yeah, so you got to put a big bar on it and...
Yeah.
Do you have a good seal around that? Because I questioned that two weeks ago. Is it leaking from...
No.
It's leaking on the thing that comes out into the middle, you know, that about eight inch flange that comes out of the top.
Six inch flange that comes out and stuff and goes into the other, the other four, three filters.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's leaking there, right in the valve.
Yeah, thank you.
Apparently, it's leaked so long before that it rusted a hole in the top of them where it drips onto this metal thing.
Yeah.
Dripped a hole right through it.
Mm-hmm.
Almost through it.
Yeah.
What we need to decide is, do we want to continue refurbishing these Adams filters, or do we want to put a stop on it, or what do we want to do? I mean, it doesn't cost us anything to refurbish them except the paint so far, unless we find something really bad with one. I believe we have gaskets for all of them.
Yes, we got gaskets for all of them, but we don't know, the one that they took apart was the least one that they had, was the...
Yeah, the best one.
The best one that they had. So, if they take apart the other three, we're going to have, I think, big problems. They're going to find more broken stones or whatever, and then stone there costs them.
Well, I was, see, the problem is, we got one clean one. They can't use it. If they turn the water on, that one's going to suck all the dirt into the good one. You know, they'll hog it up almost instantly, they tell me.
Well, they got to take an acid at first before they can even use it anyhow.
Yeah.
You got to put molyric acid in there, let it set for a day or so, Ryan, or a couple days, and then they flush it.
Yeah.
15, 20 dimes and... So, I think I told, I asked him also about if we could get together with ADS and see what it would cost to have another Adams, or industrial filter.
We had a meeting scheduled with ADS, and they changed it, postponed it till they get, the company that's hooking up the skid unit is, they want to coordinate it with them, I believe. Am I correct, Steve?
Yeah, just want to get it all said and done before they come back and...
You know, make sure that that's working right, and then have the ADS come in, and then we'll have a meeting with them. And the thing, the question I had for them was, the question I had was, it's about 100, well, it's not really that, but it could be up to $100,000 to refurbish the Adams system. It's $22,000 a piece, but that's if you replace all the stones, which we don't need to do. But it still won't work properly because the health department don't let us flush it properly, and it'll clog up again. That's what kind of put it on the fritz to begin with.
So, either that or if we cut a hole, see, we were supposed to put a valve up on the top for air.
Put air in the top.
Right, air in the top, yeah.
So, we kind of got to look and see if we're going to go that route, or can we tear all that out and put an industrial, a third industrial filter in there for a reasonable amount of money, like, well, under $100,000. And then if we do it soon enough, we might have money left over in a grant that we're using for the upgrade now, because that's coming in under budget, pretty good. So, these are all things that we need to talk to ADS about and just get some ballpark figures, so we're not an engineering study at this time, just some...
I guess you have to trusty and I, Arnold and I, get together and really think about which direction we want to send this lot of time in, how much money are we willing to invest in it, you know? Try to get some preliminary figures from folks to see what it's going to cost us.
That's pretty much what we're looking at.
To rebuild things.
Yeah.
Or how much money we even want to sink into it, because if we rebuild that plant and show the grant people, I'm going to say, you've got a pretty good situation going on there. I don't know if you qualify for much money.
We need to look into all those factors.
That's what I'm saying, is you've got to make a careful decision on who we want to spend that money.
The problem is, we've got the industrial side up and running 100% or will when this project's done, which should be a matter of days. And if we, yeah, that's what I feel, too, but hopefully within a couple of weeks, we should have it going. The thing is, we need a backup system. I think we're required to have it. So, the thing is, can we cobble the Adams system together enough for that backup, or do we go the other route? And the kind of general idea that I had in mind, I've talked informally with different board members and stuff, is that we're hoping that when the water tower is paid for, the bond is finally paid off.
Our son, how long is it, five more years?
Yes. In five years, we can look at a complete new, fully automated water plant, which would be millions. And the money to pay for that, that loan to pay that, the mortgage to pay that off, would come and reduce manpower, because they're almost fully automated. And to that end, I'm proposing, when we get a break around here, that we take a field trip over to Elbert and Swan. They, both those water systems have the kind that we're kind of looking at or thinking about, so we need to all go over there and take a look at what they've got and see how it really works. And then if that's the case, this meeting with ADS, they have a grant writer on their staff now for these things, and that's where we can get all these preliminary figures to see which way we need to go on this, if it's feasible or not. And then in the meantime, we've got this project going down in Ticonderoga with a new system of overhauling the Adams, their Adams system with those bags on it, and see if that's...
They're having a problem getting them back.
But it's not working right now.
Yeah.
Theirs is not up and running.
No. But they're having a problem getting the bags to go over the sleeves.
Yeah.
And stuff, they get, I guess they can't, either can't find a buyer or a seller, or somebody can't make them as good as the ones that's in the other system.
Yeah. So, that's kind of where we are in the water plant. We should have some more answers in the next, I would guess, about two weeks. Would you say, Steve, we'll have a meeting with them within two weeks?
I would think so. Yeah, I think we'll look at after the...
Could we bring one of them over to Elbert with us?
Uh, if they need to. I mean, they might be fully aware what these are already, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But I think just a learning expedition for us to figure out what we're looking at would be helpful at this time. And I think if we start planning for this without spending money on it, but planning for it, preliminarily, maybe a couple of years before the water tower project's done, this could just smoothly go right into that project at that time. So, anyway.
So, the new system would be up by the water day?
Probably, yeah. I say probably because I don't know what the engineers will tell us, but that's presumably where they'd like to put it.
The current building, you leave pumps and pump the water up there. That's basically what the current building would be for.
Yeah.
We could get away with, the way I understand it, is treating water at two sources, here and at the tank, right? Because we treat it when it leaves the tank.
Well, we hit it with chlorine.
Right.
When it leaves the tank, that's all we treat it with, is chlorine.
Right, but aren't we hitting it with chlorine down here?
Yes, yes.
And then because of the contact time with the tank, we have to treat it when it goes up.
Well, then you ain't automating that.
No, that's what the system...
That's what we do now.
Oh, now, oh, yeah.
That's what we do now.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the new system.
No, no. We get a new system.
I'm talking about pumping it up in.
Yeah.
Most of this building would be reduced in size a lot. It would just be, there wouldn't be any filters in it, it would just be pumps, right?
Yeah.
It would just be a little pump house down there.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
All right. At the fire station, in the ladies room, they'd like to know if anybody, or if the village could take and put a bar next to the toilet.
Or a handicap bar?
Handicap bar.
So...
I would say we could do that.
Can I look into that, Mr. Falcone?
Both those bathrooms need to be handicap accessible. That's what they're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, and the other thing I'd like to talk about is the gate up here. I talked to Mr. Gaines, well, whatever, Walt over there, and he, he was pretty upset that we closed that gate on him. And I don't think the village has the authority of closing that gate. It's a private gate. It's his gate. It's not the village's gate. It's his gate. He can leave that gate open if he'd like to.
Well, he could do that, and, you know, if we had to, we could put barricades up there, you know, concrete barricades or something, because it's our private driveway that they're using to get in the back of their thing. I don't, I don't have a...
He's pretty upset about it.
But he didn't have permission to put a gate there on, you know, like...
He didn't put the gate there. Trev Walt put the gate there.
Right.
And it's been, it's been open ever since Trev Walt put the gate, but the fence up there. And now we're directing the traffic around to the senior citizen house.
Well, that's a road.
Yeah, but still, still, it doesn't make any difference. This is a road, too. But, you know, so you're sending all the traffic up to the senior housing, and, you know, the senior housing, them people out there, they drive, too, you know? They go out there and stuff like that. So, and Mr. Dar says that they're speeding up through here and stuff like that. Well, if they are, put a cop up there, you know? Have them picked up or whatever. But I can't see where you guys can take and have this gate closed for a personal reason.
Well...
And not only that, what happens if there's a fire up there, and the fire department goes up there and the gate is closed, or emergency?
Cut the lock.
Cut the lock, no.
That's what fire departments do.
Well, yeah, well...
When they have to get to a fire, you cut the lock going to the fort one time, remember when you did that?
Yeah.
As firemen, and you're fully authorized to do it, and do the right thing to do.
But still, I mean, the guy's had the gate open for three years or four years now, and all of a sudden now he's got to close it. For what reason?
Well, there were both six reasons. I went into it, and I'd like to ask Mr. Peters, did you see that...
I read the six reasons, and I can't see any of them that's legal.
Did Walter give you any negative feedback towards this when you talked with him?
Well, he liked that they can do this, you know, to help out the village and stuff, but he said it's really inconvenient for them and stuff. And he says, you know, what am I going to do? He said, I tried to work with the village, and I thought the village would work with me, you know?
Well, we're going backwards for him, letting him pull his boats all over. They changed the village law for him to not boats on, try, on roads.
You changed the law for him?
Yeah, for all the reasons, but...
Well, he wasn't really doing it. Well... Well, I mean, they're, they're bringing some business into this village. You know, well, I think we ought to bend over backwards for them. And closing that gate didn't help them out. Well, I think Mr. Peters ought to send him a letter and tell him they can open up the gate. I'd like to make that a motion.
It's his gate anyway, right?
Well, sure it's his gate.
It's his gate, but it's our road. It's our driveway. It's not a pillowed street. It's a private driveway to the sewer plant.
I mean, he's just a piece of property. You have to have the gate there and you have to.
Well, what would happen, what would happen if you had a gate down here? And you had it open, the villagers don't get to lock it up on your property.
If I had, if I couldn't control my, my customers from trespassing on somebody else's property, and I won't say it's trespassing, it's a little strong, but.
Has he ever been a sign up there said that they're trespassing? No, nothing.
I guess if this, if the point is. If we're gonna, if you're gonna do this, he has the right, it's his land, to open the gate. And if we don't want him to go in there, you put a do not enter sign or private roadway driveway or whatever and.
Or put a gate on our side. And then you're back to square one again, you know?
But I thought first we just didn't want the liability of having any village owned vehicles go through there that way.
No, we didn't, we didn't care about it. Village owners are going through there.
The village goes through there all the time. Was going through there all the time.
Right.
And it's making it pretty easy for them and stuff.
They shouldn't be going through there.
Well.
What if they had a boat or something, you know?
Well, hey, they had a boat, well then, hey.
I thought that was a point, just predict the village if he wants to just open up his lot to traffic, but you should put the sign up. It should be.
If, if we're having a problem, an issue with the village employees going through, then.
Well, that's easy enough to fix.
We ought to send out a letter to them or whatever. I don't think, I don't think we should penalize a.
Him.
A person on its own lane or, or try to, you know, penalize him. It's his private land.
Well, that's, that's, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but that's not really the issue. The issue is his people going from his private land onto our private land. In other words, that's not a village street. That's a, that's a.
It's not a village street, but we don't have private land. It's the village. It's public.
Right, we have, we have restricted areas.
Then we need to put a sign up there that says restricted area or do not enter. This is village, you know, I mean.
I think we're getting way out of line here and stuff like this and that. I think we ought to work with the people and stuff like that and let them use the gate. I mean, they've been using it for three and a half years. And I, I can't see the bother.
Post some speed signs up there if they're speeding or whatever else, or, or put the share, call the share, you know, I mean.
Yeah. That's what I said. I said that they're speeding up through there.
These people are bringing money into their village.
Yeah.
I mean, does Walt have any problem with people just driving through there and not relating it?
No, no, he don't have no problem. Drive through there if you want. Who cares, he says.
I think that's, that'd be my concern is, well, that's still his.
Yeah, that's what I said. If he doesn't, if he doesn't care, then.
He's just trying to help out the village, that's all.
Right. And, you know, I don't know. I mean, if it's more convenient for his customers or whatever to come out that way, I mean, they are, they are.
Well, how many times do they go up there? They go up there a little bit in the summertime, in the wintertime, they don't go up there.
No. And they're there probably right now until their boat gets in the water.
That's right.
Besides the road itself. Uh, our building, Ryan's building, Public Works building, is showing up on some maps as the marina. Well, you don't have people coming knocking at your door at nine o'clock at night like I do.
I got people coming at my door.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
They turn around on my driveway all the time for the train.
Or they get, they get lost because they're trying to find their way back to Lake Street and they go round and round the village garage and stealing stuff out of the uh.
Oh, come on, come on.
They're stealing metal, you know, chasing them out of there.
Really?
I chased them out of there.
Oh, come on, they're not stealing metal, come on.
I don't believe that, no, no. The thing is, well, never mind. Never mind, you're getting me upset here and I don't want to get upset. If I get upset, nobody's going to like me here. No, we don't want, we've seen that before. We don't want that.
I think Mr. Peters ought to write a letter. I make this a motion. Then Mr. Peters write a letter and tell them to open up their gate.
See, um, well, hold on a minute.
Write a letter to, and tell him to do whatever he wants, would like.
Just a minute. Um, we have input from superintendent here, Calvin. Are these cars bothering your guys with the trucks or equipment at all?
I, I mean, there's nothing that can't be controlled. I mean, maybe a couple of speed limit signs up there.
Well, we can't put speed limit signs on.
Tell them to slow down.
And that's a thousand dollars to do that. You have to make a local law for that.
Why, why do you make, make a local law?
Because they're not enforceable if you don't. You, you can't put up a sign and then write a ticket for it. You have to have what they call enabling legislation in your, in your.
They don't have a village speed limit?
Not on that road we don't. Every road has to have a speed limit on it.
Our, our village's speed limit is twenty five miles an hour.
On every single street, it has to be specifically identified. Look in your village code book. It's in there. Every street, every stop sign. Anything to do with traffic control is in our village law. And if you, that street has, I believe, is not in the book. If you want to put a speed limit there, you can do it, but you have to pass a local law to do it and that costs quite a bit of money. And you have to public hearing and, you know, if you want to do that, we can do it, but. But I mean, you can't just put a sign.
The gate on the, on the back end, right?
Yeah.
Not on, down by uh. At the end of Farm Street, no, at the end of Farm Street.
Oh, yeah.
You go right in there. There's no gate there, right?
No, that's, he's got, he's got other things in the between there and, in between the buildings.
The gate's on the, on the senior housing side when you go out?
Yeah.
Okay. There's no gate going in, right?
No, there's a gate on, right across from the.
There's a gate at the end of Manor Drive. If you turn right off of Pratt Street and went due north. That's, that's not a driveway, that's a public road. And the parking lot off of that is the senior housing. Now, at the end of the Manor Drive, there's a gate, because it's basically dead end street, Manor Drive. That gate is usually open, I believe, for the boats. That's how they get in there.
That's how they take the boats out and.
Everybody, yeah, that's how they use it for the remote parking, because they got that changed in law too. They have. Parking that's two miles away from the, or a mile away from the marina. And then they're supposed to have a shuttle bus thing to take them down there. Of course, they never did that. On the back thing, there's a gate. If you went right through the, the boat parking. There's another gate that opens onto our wastewater treatment plant driveway. That's what they're talking about, is that.
That gate.
That gate. And I think there's another gate.
It's his gate and the village made him lock it.
Well, he didn't have permission to put a gate there. I mean, this is like, um.
Who said he didn't have permission?
Where? This is like when you put a, a road in on the state highway, you have to have permission if you want to put a driveway.
Trevwell asked the village if he could put a gate there. The village said yes.
When did that happen?
When he built, when he built the building.
Probably four or five years.
Yeah.
I don't know, I wasn't on the board at the time. I mean, I could see him having one there anyway, just for emergency access.
Emergency purposes, yeah.
I could see that, but I mean. I don't think it should be his primary entrance into his building, you know, that's all I'm saying, but.
But Sarah, it is what it is now, right?
Well, somewhat, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion on this, one way or the other.
But you need a motion if it's uh.
Well, if we're going to direct something, we're going to get this on the record, one way or the other, how we're doing this.
I make a motion that's a gate be open.
And he be given a letter? That he has permission to access our driveway.
Right.
Okay, do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, you have three ayes and one no.
Could you do a roll call, please?
We don't need a roll call on this. This is just to have the administrator send a letter authorizing to uh, open his gate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have tonight. All right, trustee Dart.
I've got one item. Um, last time we had, uh, last meeting we had. Mr. Jellino asked for clarification and it was actually in the form of a letter that we sent to Mr. Pelkey. And I said, probably the board wasn't going to take action on it. Emergency calls and calls in general are covered by union contract. Right now, under the current contract, that goes to the thirty first of uh, May. It's under, on page seven on article six. And so. Anything else to do with changing that, we have to go through the union.
Right.
That's, that's the board's response to Mr. Jellino. Is that emergency call to cover now?
Okay. Anything else?
I do not. I had asked for an executive session with just the board and the mayor, but. I don't have enough information yet to have that session.
Okay. Trustee Menard?
Uh, just one thing. I would like to thank the Public Works and all the crews that cleaned up the village. It looks very good. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee LeBlanc?
I've got two items. One is just, um, I want to bring up the. The work that we do by the village crews on mowing. And I know it's kind of late in the season this year, but uh. I was just thinking about privatizing that function and using our resources for more work for their. More important work for the village. Uh, at the end of May, it's kind of late for the season, but uh. I'd like to get some feedback, maybe perhaps your planning on focusing some of the public work crew and really public works. Not so much landscaping and things like that.
I don't, I don't think you can do that because it's, it's under union. You're taking a job away from a union person.
I don't know about that because they, it would be reducing manpower, just be assigning them something else, but. I'll tell you how you, how you go about this. And I'm not, this isn't my bailiwick at all, but the way you go about this is. First gather information now from everybody that's mowing lawns. How many hours they spend on the lawns? How many square feet of lawns they mow? How many, exactly what the thing is. Then make some preliminary inquiries with some of the contractors and see what they charge for that. Just rough ideas, not bids or anything. And get an idea. And it sounds, my problem with it is, is that. I don't see us reducing any manpower at all. It isn't like we're going to lay off three people because we're not doing lawns anymore, because it's seasonal. And then, but it could be bringing in um. A, a contract bid for like, what would you say, kind of like maybe ten, fifteen thousand dollars or something like that?
Oh, boy, yeah.
Maybe twenty or, I mean, I'm just going by what the snow power bids were.
Well, usually, usually the average, the average guy that mows lawn, like me and stuff like that, it's usually a dollar and a half. An hour.
No.
Yep.
No, say it differently.
Or a dollar and a half, excuse me, a dollar and a half a minute.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I.
It's like ninety bucks an hour.
Right.
You could think your lawnmower goes ninety miles an hour.
That's, that's, that's just me. Now, some of the other people, they charge like two fifty a minute.
Mm-hmm.
You know? So you're talking some big bucks, you're talking rec center here, you're talking the library, the village garage, or the village's office, the park, the library, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of people looking into things to save money, you know, feasibility studies and stuff like that. But a lot of this stuff is. We have a small overall crew of people and they have to be able to multitask. And a few months of the year, some people are mowing lawns, then they're making ice. Other people are putting electric wires up, but then they're plowing snow, you know, and it's.
Or decorations.
And all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And then sometimes all of them are causing water leaks.
Wow.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But you can look into it. That's, that's how we would start. We'd start that way and that.
All right, my second item is, uh, I'd like the village to be pursued becoming, designing a clean energy community under the. Direction of New York State Energy Research Development Association. There's a, a couple of communities, I think it goes Champlain who did this, I'm not sure for what reasons, but. There are a number of communities in the United States that have done this. And the, the only, well, I could say that my purpose of doing this is being altruistic and looking for cleaner energy, but it's not. I, I, I'm just looking for the possibility of obtaining a grant. They have grant money that is uh. Due to expire in two thousand nineteen sometime, and we can apply for some energy related grant money. Uh, if we don't get any.
Well, if we can do that, we could probably clean up the beach now.
Well, it has to be energy related. But the point is, if we don't get any money, sail the beach, right? If we get money, then we can think about.
Well, the clean energy, oh, okay, power, so you're only talking power. We're talking stuff like, well, in some place it'd be solar panels, in our place it'd be like L E D lights and.
Right.
Hydro power and just I E P program.
You're going to apply up to five hundred dollars for a five hundred thousand dollar grant, which is significantly a lot of money.
I know years ago, the village, uh, were clean energy and stuff like that. I don't know about clean energy, what they called it was back then, but. They had the, like they put blankets around the hot water tanks.
Oh, yeah.
You put the, uh, a rubber gasket in your shower so you don't use so much water.
This is more of a, more of a larger scale projects.
Yeah.
The, the good news is it doesn't cost the village almost nothing to, to become certified. We're, we already have a couple of the criteria and it's pretty easy to meet the minimum criteria. I just, uh, what, if the, the board will pay to pursue this and to become, become uh. Certified, if we do, then I'll take care of applying for the grant.
Trustee LeBlanc and I talked this over this morning briefly. And basically, he's willing to go through the paperwork exercise to see if we can get ourselves certified. There's ten criteria and you have to meet four of them. And it looks like four of them are pretty low hanging fruit to, to grab here.
Sounds like a great idea.
And he's willing to do it, so there's no cost at all involved and there's a potential that, you know. Do you need a motion on that? No, I, I don't think so. I think he just bring it to our attention and I'll, the board's pool will just assign him to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
Okay? So that's what we'll do. So thank you for that. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Um, other reports, um, our son?
Uh, all they have to report is the tax bill, they're at the printers.
Whoopie. We're going to get our bills in a minute, okay. Mr. Peters?
Yes, sir. Last week we had, um, we had a staff meeting, uh, just to clean up our leave request policy. Got some new paperwork there for that. Um, we've articulated the purchasing policy to the staff. Now with the affirmative vote from you, we'll be able to let the. Uh, let all of our purchasers know kind of how that's going to work. It's a challenging process and the only thing we changed was that dollar amount and that flow chart while confusing actually only reflects. The law itself. That's what is so challenging about it. Um, we've discussed the, uh, uniform policy as per the union contract that'll run you, go into effect on June one. Um, so been working with Becky to get all that set up the right way. Uh, and then today, with the assistance of trustees Dart and Arno, um, Mr. Pelkey, Ms. Shields, myself. We've established, more or less, we think to be a, a, a procedure for how this building is going to get painted. Um, I believe you all will be updated on that through trustee Dart or Arno very, very soon. I've sent you the email and I promised you I would. So we're moving forward with that and those are, right now, those are the things we're looking at. Finally, um, the consolidated funding application grants are out for New York State. Uh, with a due date of July twenty seventh. That's the, kind of the overarching grant program that New York State runs through all of its various agencies. Uh, with kind of that one application deadline. And, uh, this is an opportunity for, uh, all municipalities to, you know, apply for things to further. Uh, master plans, to move projects along, to apply for, uh, whether it's feasibility study grants, things like that. Uh, so basically, what I'm going to ask is if any of you have anything that is, that you're interested in. Um, that, you know, certainly let me know if you're willing or we can all discuss it. Um, because I'd like to put together a, a short list of things that we will, will apply for. Uh, and take advantage of this opportunity. Um, I think we could do that fairly well. Uh, there's a lot of things in this community that certainly we could seek assistance on and. Think the village would be in good position to move forward, so. Uh, certainly, all of you are the, you know, you're the voice in, you know, this community and so anything that you think is out there. Uh, I'll do the paperwork, so let me know.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pelkey?
Yes.
You've got some stuff to tell us.
No, I think it's just great. I have a, I have a gentleman coming up from Power Sales tomorrow to meet with me. I have a, I have a gentleman coming up from power sales tomorrow to meet with me to go over our switch problems that we're having in the village. That one that we had the problem with on Chapman Street.
Yep.
So I'll be tied up with him most of the morning, um, to do some tests. So he'll be working across from the village office and that one on Chapman. We're trying to get him to warranty that one on Chapman. And that's about a forty thousand dollar switch.
Right.
There's a problem internally there. Um, we tried our first water.
Is there a, excuse me, is there a, a warranty or a, a time limit on that, on that switch here?
Well, it's because, um, we don't use it that often and I think they've been having a recall on it.
Oh.
He knows what the problem is.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, we identified the problem and, you know, when we talked to him, he said, yeah, they've been having problems with them, so.
All right.
Unfortunately, the switch has been taken out of service, so I'll have to do an outage and do a cross tie and.
Yep.
'Cause people can't be without power, like water.
Yeah.
I have plenty of water.
Yeah?
Those may could change tomorrow too.
We tried to do one of the pushes on Rose Avenue for the new, uh, house service water lines to get the people off the old four inch. And unfortunately, it didn't work very well today. We were pushing between a sewer line, a water line, uh, two water lines and power, power lines. And, uh, we hit the four inch dead center and snapped it. We had to repair it. So we're looking at a different plan of action down there. I talked to the mayor and we might do some open cuts on the road and like one open cut for two houses and bring both ways to reduce the amount of cutting and keep the trenches as narrow as we can. That's plan B. Plan A didn't work. Right, Mr. Mayor?
It has, it has some issues that we'll overcome. Have it all done by tomorrow.
The new backhoe is ordered. It should be here any day. So, when it comes through, I'll let you know if you wanna take a look at it. We did very well on our pricing on it for being right on the budget money.
Now, can you take and put the?
Yes. This is all plum for the jackhammer.
For the jackhammer, yes. Excellent.
It's got a quick connect front end bucket with a set of forks. I will lift eight thousand pounds. So we can lift any manhole that's in our yard now.
That better than the gale?
Yes. The gale would lift seven thousand. This'll lift eight. More versatile machine, many uses. I wanna thank you for the okay and that and the budget. You make our lives a little easier.
And your new pickup truck.
Oh, yeah, and my new pickup.
And the thumb for that backhoe. Saw today where you could use it.
Yeah, trustee Dart was. Yeah, trustee Dart was down there and, uh, we had the jackhammer and the cement in the road and the pieces of cement are so, so large that it's hard to hold a piece of cement and with the thumb it would hold it to. We, we don't even dare to put them in our dump truck. We pick them up with the forks and we brought them directly up to our pile, so. It just destroys the boxes of the trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Other than that, uh, we're making progress. I mean, the village, uh, like trustee Menard said, we got it all cleaned up, swept up, uh, all the brush picked up. Guys did a good job.
Yeah, the village looks pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, very neat and clean. I just wonder when the flowers are coming?
This would be this week.
This, this week?
I told him by Friday, 'cause we usually have him delivering on Friday and we put them up.
Usually out before mother's day.
I'll call him back.
Thank you.
Just wanna mention to, to Brian that I think trustee, uh, LeBlanc and I, you need to sit down when you get some time, 'cause you were discussing employment today and, you know, needs a clear direction.
Yes.
On what we're gonna do, because we're not really going in a clear direction right now. And so, as soon as you get some time.
We'll tie up tomorrow.
We'll free up, we'll free up our time, him and I, to meet with you about that.
Okay.
So we can get some things going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Shields?
Um, well, as Steve said, we are going ahead with the procedure. I think we're finally all narrowing in. Our eyes kinda seem to be on the same road, which is good. I think there was a lot of up in the air decisions. Um, one of the things we had talked about was being proactive at this point as far as the repairs to the outside of the building. Getting those started, bondo, pulling dents out. Um, I did look into the extra muscle pre-paint cleaner. It's what we would use on the building. You can pressure wash with it. Uh, there are specifics with it as far as how it's applied, but it is biodegradable, water-based, and it creates zero hazard to the public or ourselves. Um, so that was actually really good to see. Uh, it's quoted at two thirty-nine sixty, so we'd be able to pick that up and actually start that fairly soon. Um, it's actually very compatible with any temperature, rain, uh, cold weather, hot weather. So altogether, I think that Sharon Williams did an amazing job quoting out this specific product for us, which will do great with the building. Um, and then allow the paint to actually adhere much nicer to it. So I think that's the step we're gonna go and, like I said, start our repairs and get that taken care of. So when the paint does come and we've done our procedure as far as how we're gonna do the application, then we're pretty much set to just paint and hopefully have it all done before July fourth. That would be pretty nice to see. Um, so we are there with that. We're just continuing with, uh, lawn care outside pickup. Kind of establishing a schedule, a plan amongst each other as far as what we do on certain days. But I definitely wanted to take time to thank Brian and his crew, uh, for last week helping us with the mulch, the bushes. Um, without that help, you know, we would have been struggling still and we were actually able to focus more on the stuff that, you know, we haven't been able to get to, just because we're trying to do that day-to-day maintenance. Uh, so thank you very much. It was definitely appreciated. And it looks amazing, so, but that's all I have at this point.
See, Mrs. Laterno was out today this afternoon spreading mulch and dirt and I don't know what she was doing.
Breaking.
A lot of work in the back here.
Yeah, she, yeah, she rakes the, each mound.
Is that what she's doing?
Yeah.
Also, I didn't get with, uh, Mr. St. John that, uh, let you know how they're gonna do the memorial service down here, Memorial Day.
Yeah, Aaron and I, we discussed that today. Um, he has offered to take it on. He said he's done it. But either way, he's gonna show me just kinda the procedure of it, just so I know, uh, for future, but yes, we did discuss that.
Aaron did it last year with the, with the speakers and all that stuff. Yeah, he knows how to do that.
Yes.
So. And Alex is in nice shape this year.
Same, same, uh, program.
Same program, yeah. Last year was, we had some problems there. It looked like it's all corrected now.
Yeah, well, I went down there, fixed that up.
Last year. And put like three A's in there fixing that.
That looks amazing. And as you saw, we did remove some trees.
Yeah.
I got one complaint already today, the, the tree's gone in the crumb.
Yeah. But we did have some dead trees actually down in the park by the memorial.
It was clumped.
That the crew came out and we knocked down. And I did go through and we kinda trimmed down the. Makes it a little bit easier on the mowing when you're not being taken out by branches, so it looks a lot neater and trimmed up.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's no one from the public that wants to address this, so does anyone else have anything to say today? Not, taking a motion to adjourn?
So will.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.